Good evening and welcome to the reorganization meeting of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Adjustment. Today is Wednesday, January 10th, 2024, and it is 7:32 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. We're going to start off by the swearing of new board members who are, or reappointments and appointments, who are Dave Kaplan as a regular member, Chris Mazzarella, regular member, who will be sworn in next week, he's not able to make it tonight, Loretta Grignani, alternate number one, and Santosh Petty, alternate number two.
Mr. Kaplan?
What's the deal?
I, Dave Kaplan,
I, Dave Kaplan,
do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
That I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey,
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey,
and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same,
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same,
and to the governments established in the United States,
And to the governments established in the United States,
and in this state,
And in this state,
under the authority of the people,
Under the authority of the people,
so help me God,
So help me God,
I do further solemnly swear,
I do further solemnly swear,
that I will impartially,
That I will impartially,
and justly perform,
And justly perform,
all the duties of the Office of,
All the duties of the Office of,
Board of Adjustment, regular member, Township of Parsippany Troy Hills,
Board of Adjustment, regular member, Township of Parsippany Troy Hills,
according to the best of my abilities,
According to the best of my abilities,
so help me God,
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, Loretta Grignani,
I, Loretta Grignani,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey,
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey,
and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same,
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same,
and to the governments established in the United States,
And to the governments established in the United States,
and in this state,
And in this state,
under the authority of the people,
Under the authority of the people,
so help me God,
So help me God,
I do further solemnly swear,
I do further solemnly swear,
that I will impartially,
That I will impartially,
and justly perform,
And justly perform,
all the duties of the Office of,
All the duties of the Office of,
Board of Adjustment, alternate number number one,
Alternate, Loretta, alternate,
Board of Adjustment,
Board of Adjustment,
Alternate number number one, Township of Parsippany Troy Hills,
Township of Parsippany Troy Hills,
according to the best of my ability,
According to the best of my ability,
so help me God,
So help me God.
Did you watch that game for a little bit later?
I sure did. I had my Michigan shirt on, my Michigan shirt.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Michigan, John? See Derek Jeter at the game where it was Michigan. Yeah, so you have him in Georgia.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same,
I think he actually went to Michigan for his semester.
And in this state,
Yeah, yeah.
I know.
I do further solemnly swear,
Yeah.
that I will impartially and justly perform all the duties of the Office of,
What kind of stuff you got, my son?
Number two.
My nephew and my son.
Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, according to the best of my ability,
Yes, congratulations.
Taking your seat, wait there?
My seat?
Didn't you get a seat from Yankee Stadium?
I got four of them.
Four, yeah.
Two of them are on my patio down this hall, and the other two are Robin's.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations, all.
Yes.
Okay, so I am now going to take nominations for chairperson.
I nominate, uh, I'm happy to nominate Robert Ira Kane as chairman of the Board of Adjustment.
Second, ready.
Nominations be closed.
Second.
All right, and so can I have a motion? For Mr. Ira Kane to serve as board chairman?
Motion. What? Second.
Thank you.
Berkowitz,
Yes.
Grignani,
Yes.
Jaskowitz,
Yes.
Kaplan,
Yes.
Petty,
Yes.
Ready,
Yes.
Willand.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. We're now going to take nominations for vice chair.
I would nominate David Kaplan for vice chair.
Second, ready.
Move nominations be close.
Second.
Okay, a motion for Mr. Kaplan to serve as vice chair.
So move first.
Second, Jaskowitz.
Berkowitz,
Yes.
Grignani,
Yes.
Jaskowitz,
Yep.
Kaplan,
Yes.
Petty,
Yes.
Ready,
Yes.
Willand,
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes.
Okay, and a motion for confirmation of planning board secretary.
Person here.
So move secretary.
Second.
I move Norah Jordan.
Second, North.
Berkowitz,
Yes.
Grignani,
Yes.
Jaskowitz,
Yes.
Kaplan,
Yes.
Petty,
Yes.
Ready,
Yes.
Willand,
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes.
And then we're going to move on to the appointment slash reappointment of the Board of Adjustment professionals.
I nominate John Shablon to be our board planner.
Second, Jaskowitz.
Might as well do them all at once. Also, our engineer GPI.
I nominate Chaz Holloway.
Second, Jaskowitz.
And Mr. Johnson. Johnson and Johnson.
I nominate Mr. William Johnson.
Second, Jaskowitz.
Berkowitz, John Shablon. Roll call, Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani,
Yes.
Jaskowitz,
Yes.
Kaplan.
So I just want to say one thing before I vote, and this is nothing that I haven't said before, but I do want the board to consider in the future having the opportunity to fully vet any professional who is going to be voted on prior to, well in advance to the night of the vote. I recognize that politics is going to play a role. I don't think it should on this board. I have nothing against Mr. Johnson. I think he's wonderful. I look forward to working with him. But I am hoping that the board reconsider the process for this specific position, because it seems to happen more with this position, at least in the last two years, than it has with the other professional positions that we hold. So I am hoping the board consider that. With that said, because I've not had the opportunity to review Mr. Johnson's credentials, as great as he may be, and again, this is nothing personal, I'm going to abstain.
Petty? Did we go through his petty?
Yes.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willand?
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes.
And motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting.
Okay, so move. Start off the pleasure, we need to. Just a moment before the board starts, I appreciate your support. Another year.
And I appreciate your support as well. Thank you for having me, and I appreciate, I understand your comments, Mr. Kaplan, but I look forward to working with all of you in the next year.
Likewise.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, is there any member of the public has any business to get brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none, seen none. We have resolutions. We have resolutions. Resolution 2351, 2352 are both As, and that's Berkowitz, Kaplan, Ready, Willands, and Ira Kane. Someone want to move those two?
Move on. Second.
Any discussion? Norah, call the roll.
Berkowitz,
Yes.
Kaplan,
Yes.
Ready,
Yes.
Willand,
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. And we have application 2350, 2353, 2354, 2356, and 2355.
I move those.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Norah, call the roll.
Berkowitz,
Yes.
Jaskowitz,
Yes.
Kaplan,
Yes.
Ready,
Yes.
No correspondence, Norah?
No correspondence.
Okay, we only have one application, Mr. O'Neill. Application 2313, IAAT 745 Route 46, C variance to construct the billboard sign. You have to sit down.
Word Joseph O'Neill here on the head of the AMAC, and this is an application for an ultimate message sign at a location of 745 Route 46, currently occupied by a D-7 shop. This will be a reminder about this, this is on Route 46, down by where the Holiday Inn is, apparently affected by wetting in the back, which is an exhibit, appears to be wetting spot, but we have approval from NJDP, with the billboard that we're going to create.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you raise your right hand, please? Do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not about the truth.
I do.
Can you state your name and spell your last name?
Sure. Good evening, it's William R. Vogt Jr., and it's V as in Victor, O, G like girl, T like Tom.
Mr. Vogt, you have been before this board a few times already, representing various billboard developers.
I have.
You have been qualified as an expert for engineering for those applications.
I have.
Your license is still in good standing?
That's correct.
I would submit, Mr. Vogt, yeah, as an expert for engineering purpose.
But that's, he's acceptable. Is there, there are new members of the board, though. Do you want to go through a little bit of his credentials for their benefit?
I can sure run through it, sure. I have a bachelor's in science and civil engineering from SUNY Buffalo at New York. I am a licensed professional engineer in both New Jersey as well as New York, and I am one of the owners and principals of L2A Land Design LLC.
And how many times have you testified before this particular board?
Before this board, at least half a dozen on various applications. They're not all billboards. Some for NJM, I was here for a couple items for their Parsippany campus. I'll be back before your planning board shortly, again for NJM coming up. But I've testified going on 25 years throughout the state of New York. Thank you.
Mr. Vogt, is there reproduction of the exhibits provided to the board already?
Correct. The exhibit that I have up right now is the site plan set that was submitted as part of our application.
Your office, or what we're proposing?
Sure. This is drawing C-01 through C-05. It has a date of February 2nd, 2023, and this is for a proposed off-site, off-premise, multi-message advertising sign at 745 Route 46. It's found on Lot 10 in Block 722, and it is in your B1 Highway Development District. Do you want me to mark that as an exhibit?
Could you please reiterate the last revision date? I just want to make sure it's the same as our.
Sure, we have a, I have a, I have a date of February 2nd, 2023.
No, I have a revision number one and stated 1130, 23.
Sure, I have, I have that set as well with me. That's the update for the reduction. I was just going to go through the process of what the original submission was versus revision one.
I would ask the chairman if they wanted to be presented that way.
Let's go with what the application is.
Okay, no problem. I will just switch to those plans.
Just comment on what the revisions were.
Sure. The, so the plan set that I have in front of you is the revised set, revision one dated 1130, 23. This set shows a reduced sign. It went from a 16-foot tall by 60-foot long multi-message sign to a 14-foot tall by 48-foot long board, and it shrunk just by a foot in height. We were at 55 feet, and now we're at 54 feet. So that, that is the difference.
What was the purpose for that?
We had time to analyze the, the site. Our DOT permit is for a 16 by 60. Because of the size of the site, the 16 by 60 does adequately fit on the site. But through our analysis, we found it more practical to go with a 14 by 48. It's more of a standard billboard size that you see throughout the state.
Can you mark that?
Sure.
Would you add on that plan is 11:1?
1130, 23. Okay, so what I was going to do is, just, just to get you familiar with the site, I have another exhibit which I'll label A2. It's a, just an aerial image of the site.
We do not have that?
You do not have that. A2 is just a Google Earth aerial image of the proposed property. As you can see, it's a rectangular shaped property. North is to the bottom of the page, south is to the top. So it's along the southern side of Route 46. Route 46 traverses along the frontage of the property in an east and west direction. West being to your right, east being to your left. The site is just over four acres at 4.06 acres. The site is a, it's a small retail strip center. Access to the site, there are two driveways that access off of Route 46. You have a multi-access driveway along the western portion of the frontage, and then you have an egress-only driveway along the eastern side of the property. Just, just to the east of the property, there is a wetland area that's partially on the property, partially off the property. We have gotten, already received permits from the DEP for the proposed construction of this billboard sign. And I'll get into that with a little more detail in a few minutes. So under proposed conditions, I'm going to flip back to A1. On that easterly side of the property, just back from the egress driveway, we are going to locate that 14 by 48 V-shaped, double-sided, multi-message billboard. It is 54 feet in height. We have a setback along the Route 46 corridor of 30.15 feet. I have a side yard setback of 27.63 feet off the eastern side. And then I have a very large setback to the rear and to the western side setbacks. There are 422.91 feet and 295.05 feet. On your, on the site plans, we delineated the wetlands along the property. Basically, the wetlands form a perimeter around the property. Those wetlands are, we put, we submitted to the DEP for a letter of interpretation first to determine what the classification is for those, the resource value for those wetlands. They're intermediate resource wetlands, so it requires a 50-foot transition area or a buffer. That 50-foot transition area, we are within, our foundation is within that 50-foot transition area. So that prompted us to get a transition area waiver for redevelopment from the DEP. I received that permit from them at the end of August of last year, and that allows me to perform the disturbance for the foundation that's within that 50-foot transition area or buffer. So I have all that permitted already.
Is there any existing improvements in the transition area?
Yes, they were permitted. We Oprah'd all of that information. That was permitted back when they constructed the center or did the addition to the center when the Harbor Freight tenant went in. So those improvements, excuse me, were all permitted and, and verified with the DEP. So I'm just going to flip to drawing CO5 of that same exhibit A1. It's just the sign elevation. So this just gives you a elevation of the proposed sign. We are 54 feet in total height from the ground to the top of the sign. It's a, again, it's a 14-foot height sign with a 3-foot apron below it. Again, to the property line along Route 46, I have 30.15 feet. And then to the actual pavement line, roughly 41 feet setback from the actual travelway of Route 46.
What's the revision date on that particular page?
That, that's the same. That's the same, correct.
Could you please describe or show us on the plan how it impacts any parking spaces?
Sure. So I'm just, I'm going to flip back to the site plan. Where we're locating the, the foundation is going to be situated within an existing landscaped island. So it has no impact to any of the parking stalls. If I go back to the aerial, I don't know if you can, if you can briefly see that, but if you see this brown area at the end of the parking stall on the easterly side, there is a, there's a landscaped island that I have sufficient room to.
And the easterly parking is adequate. Eight sort of.
It's not changing.
Oh, did I just push up for a plan note or something debating or indicating what the existing parking is and how it applies?
Okay, I could, I could Oprah the prior approval, and, and we can add that to the plan. That's not, that's not an issue. Great.
But your response was there's no loss in parking spaces?
No loss in parking spaces, and we're protecting the foundation with four concrete bollards around the base. So any vehicle that's backing up or pulling into that last space, there's a, there's a bumper, basically, before they would impact the monopole foundation. What I can show you is just a couple of color elevations. I'll label this as A3. A3 is several color elevations of the proposed multi-message sign. The first is, I believe it's eight pages, and I believe this was submitted to the board?
It was submitted, but marked it.
Okay, A3. What I'm going to do is, I'm just, the same picture is on the second page. It just has a, it has a scale to it. Yes, that's the package. Yes. So if you switch to the second page, it gives you a scale on the height for the billboard.
And is that the revised 1448?
That's correct. That's correct. These, these exhibits all reference Harbor Freight lot, Route 46 in Parsippany, 14-foot by 48-foot digital center mount at 54-foot height. So this is the westbound direction, and what a driver will see from approximately 400 feet along, traveling along Route 46. So this would be the left-hand read, so a car traveling westbound along Route 46. And then if you switch, if you go a couple more pages, you'll get to the eastbound.
What is that red line just to the right side of it?
Is that for the height?
Sure, it's just, it's just visual so you can see the height. So it's, it's showing the ground elevation at the Harbor Freight site, and then your 40-foot to the bottom and 54-foot to the top. And that's, that's your 14-foot tall sign.
It's nothing.
No, it's, it's just visual for your eye, that's all. And then I'm just going to switch in. If you go in towards the end of the packet, it's probably page. I believe it's page five, five or six. It's page six, I believe. This is the eastbound or right-hand read. So if you're traveling eastbound along Route 46, this is your read to your right-hand side. And again, it shows at approximately a 400-foot distance along Route 46. You're backed by, I believe you're backed by Kelly, Kelly Dynets. And again, same graphic, it shows the 54-foot height and 40-foot to the bottom of the sign.
So the sign behind all the Harbor Freight sign and all the other billboard?
Sorry, sorry.
Is the existing sign going to be revised at all?
The existing pylon sign? No, that, that stays in its current location. There, there's no impacts or changes proposed for that.
Let me interrupt, thank you.
Free-standing sign.
How much is the, what, like, is it going to block that Harbor Freight?
No, it's, so the Harbor Freight sign is roughly the same height as the actual building, the Harbor Freight building. They're both pretty, pretty even with each other, and then we're going to be up above it. So I'm, I'm actually probably close to 20 feet above the top of the sign.
So all your exhibits show that sign that you're proposing be saying Harbor Freight, but obviously it's going to have multi-messengers on it?
That's correct. We, the, the artist just put that on there as a frame of reference since that, that is what the property is. But it's, it's not, it's not for Harbor Freight. This is an off-premise, premise advertising sign.
This is not for Harbor Freight?
It is not for Harbor Freight.
It's a billboard.
I got it, I got it.
Correct. And I apologize if that's misleading. It, it's, it's not a Harbor Freight sign.
Sure looks like it.
And I guess in theory it could be.
It could be.
They want to pay.
It could be.
But they own this property, is that correct? What's your signs?
The owner of the property. The, the owner is 745 Route 46 Investors, Romanu, one, two, and three.
So they're the ones that are going to receive the revenue from this sign if approved. So they're the ones who are going to receive the revenue from this sign if it.
I'm not involved with the, with the lease documents, but yes, if I had to make an educated guess, that, that would be it.
Thank you.
Good business.
Are we going to have someone, Joe, you have someone describe the sign? I mean, we're all assuming it's an LED sign with all the bells and whistles that we've heard before.
That's correct. It's a LED sign. It has a series of diodes, so it's, it's three LED diodes in a cluster per each panel. It's a red, green, and, and blue diode that puts the message on the sign.
Our next witness will go into more detail about the design of the signature.
The brightness and et cetera, stuff you said we need to.
Yes. Any other questions by the board?
I just have one, please.
Sure.
Do we know how many other companies or properties are going to be on this sign?
Messages?
How many messages?
How many messages? Thank you.
Sure. I think we're going to get into that in later detail, but the message is allowed to stay on the sign for eight seconds. So it's a, what they'll refer to as an eight-second flip. So the sign will, sign will remain static for eight seconds, and then under a second, it will switch to the next message sign.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I would say, you know, does this company or company that you're, that's like, have any other signs of Parsippany now? Because we approved a couple. I don't, I just don't remember who they were for.
We have one other application. We were before you at 100 Route 46, but there were some questions about the application, and then we had to regroup.
It's the zone boundary dispute.
I'm sorry.
It was the zone boundary issue.
That's correct.
Any other questions on the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none, seeing them.
Great, thank you very much.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I so swear. For the record, Brian Intandola, spelling out my last name, I-N-T-I-N-D-O-L-A. I'm a principal with Neglia Group, and I represent the traffic division of Neglia Group.
Mr. Intandola, we give the board a basic assessment of your experience.
Yes, specific Parsippany, I think the last time I was here was for a prison property application where if you have an overage on parking over 10%, you have to justify it. And that was a couple of years ago. Otherwise, for myself, I'm out three times a week, whether representing boards such as this one or testifying on behalf of applicants. And I've been doing that for approximately 17 years. So in terms of New Jersey municipalities, I think I've been in 120 of the 500 or so that are here in New Jersey. And I'm currently licensed in the state of New Jersey as a professional engineer. I went to NJIT for my undergrad as well as my masters.
Is being offered in what area?
I try.
Thank you.
Excited to leave. The chief members of the sign is you?
Oh, sure. So in, in general context, an outdoor billboard is under the jurisdiction of the NJDOT. The permit has been issued. Part of that process is that we have to go to the local board and weigh in on that. For this particular application, as I understand it, this is a use that's not allowed in the zone that we are going to situate the billboard. So we'll offer the testimony for that. Basically, the review that I would do for a, the safety, the aspects of the new billboard would be what NJDOT does in their outdoor advertising bureau. And they have issued that permit. And the things that we have to hold to is that the sign location has to be sufficient buffer away from the live travel lane, so you don't have to put a guardrail system around it, which we don't have to, because I think we're 30-foot step back from the live lane or the right-of-way as Mr. Voight had testified, provided testimony. The sign itself, as we had intimated before, in the state of New Jersey, you have to do an eight-second hold or flip, meaning that the sign has to have a static message for eight seconds, eight Mississippi, next message, then next message. It depends on how much space or demand they have for advertising. It could be that holds for a couple of messages because there's not other space, or they, they would have like advertise here. But they have to hold to that. And for me, I like to time them as I go along the highway and count the eight seconds to see if they're in compliance for other billboards. And for the, for the most part, they're right on, if not a little bit longer, especially along Route 3 and 46 Carter. In terms of permitting these myself, I've done studies to see after a billboard is built, is there any change in the distractingness or accident rate at that particular location? I've done it for Route 22 and by Kenilworth, as well as just for my own edification, we did one for the Clifton zoning board. We reviewed it and for a new LED sign. And it seems to be no correlation with introduction of a billboard with an LED message panel to add to the accident rate. And that's easily verifiable by using Safety Voyager, which is a compilation of state police records and most municipal professionals have access to that or traffic safety officers. So we didn't, I don't see any correlation. If you introduce a LED eight-second hold, does it add to driver distraction? There's been no correlation. Specific to this site, it's well situated from a traffic perspective because it's at the egress driveway, which is a right turn only, because in this section of Route 46, it's a divided highway with a median, so you can't make a left out. So you are underneath the sign, so you're not making a driver decision to go into the site. That decision has already made at the other driveway. So it's only a right turn out only driveway. And this is just at the beginning of the gore where Route 46 splits for a little bit, and then it comes back together. So all things being considered, I think the DOT process is very thorough, and I don't see from a traffic perspective how this would add to driver distraction, which I think is very important to relate. In terms of site safety and functionality, it's already being tucked in by a landscaped island. And as Bill had said, there's going to be four bollards for incidental protection of the foundation, which if you can get to the foundation itself in that column, that column will cause more damage than, you know, it's, it's belt and suspenders, safety buffer, which is good to have. And you're not coming into the driveway at speed because, again, that is the egress driveway only. So it's not, you're coming off 46 to make a decision to come into the Harbor Freight plaza there.
Mr. Intandola, according to your analysis, the visibility of the billboard itself?
Yeah, so basically, the billboard will have illumination levels that are, it's readable, of course, but not to the point where it's overbearing or causes driver glare or distraction, because that would be the opposite of what we're trying to do, is putting a safe billboard. Then the billboard has built into the circuitry, I believe, a 10% flex versus very bright conditions and evening conditions. So it does have it auto-adjusted for that, so that not only is it tuned to the specific site for illumination, but there is a 10% pullback in the evening because you don't need as much illumination level for that.
Does it shut off overnight?
No, not in this instance, no. Because that's, that's, that would be sold space, I guess, and, you know.
And it's going to be illuminated on both sides, obviously.
Yeah, so it's, it's a V formation.
So folks who are westbound on 46 are going to have a clear vision. My, my biggest concern right now with the location is, and the one exhibit on, on the signs, there's signs lower showing the shopping center and the park and ride things, okay? This is on.
This one? If I may?
Nope, not that one, nope.
Well, guess wrong.
On the eastbound one?
Yeah, on the, on the eastbound one. And to me.
Bear with me.
Yeah. The question might be. Let's start, let's start with either one of them, but that one and the next one over also, okay?
Right.
And with all the power, nothing's going to be happening with all those power lines, no changes and all that, okay? It looks like a cluttered site to me for stick that sign in behind. The other thing, the road signs up below, the green ones turn, I think the next exhibit might illustrate my front a little more fully. No, it doesn't. Yeah, well, so if I'm driving in that van right below, that green sign is blocking my normal drive, eye vision. This is way above that. So that's going to, when it's flashy, has to distract me to be looking up at that. I'm sorry, but I.
Right, so then with the eight-second hold, that's what it's supposed to.
Give me time to do it.
It gives you time to read, and then if you're in this cone of vision, the, generally, when we design traffic signals and signs as traffic engineers, we take like a 20-degree angle for a line of sight, which is like a natural angle to see stuff. So in this instance, you're just to the verge where you're looking at the bottom of the sign, and you've already registered, because you've pretty much seen what you wanted to see, maybe 300-foot back. And that, if you strike that line from, from your driver height, that's about a 500-foot read, and then you were able to cycle through.
That was your sight line on the other side.
Yes.
You, you said that it was 35 feet from the road.
Whatever.
At.
30, I think I said.
56, 46 feet from the road.
Well, Bill testified, I think, 30-foot offset from the right-of-way line.
From the vertical face.
From the vertical face of the sign? The closest is roughly 30 feet, it's a little over 30. If you want to know to the foundation, it's much further back than that.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's what you had on topic.
Yeah, if you go.
One of the versions of your site plan, you had 46.
If you go back to A1, it's 54.91 feet from the right-of-way to the center line of the foundation.
Okay.
So if you want to, you want to call it, you want to call it at least 50 feet?
Okay, so the actual face of the sign is 30-something feet?
Correct, it's 30.
30.15.
30.15, so 30 foot two inches.
How far, what's the distance between the two signs?
Oh, good question. Distance between the two signs. I'm flipping back to A1. Let me just grab my scale.
So the current Harbor Freight sign, billboard sign.
Just over 100 feet.
Okay. And your testimony is that, of course, the sign is higher, people see it from further away, and as they get closer, and they have to deal with signs that are pulling in, trip mall, then they focus down.
Correct, because your natural eye cone of vision is generally held for design purposes at 20 degrees out from your center of your eye.
Got you. The number of signs, so I'm looking at that picture we had up before, looking eastbound, the beer trucks coming out of the driveway. Yeah, that one. The number of signs, not including the signs on the building itself, the number of signs I am counting in this one picture, including the billboard, is 13. Do you find that to be excessive?
Personally, I believe that's.
Professionally?
No, I believe that for a commercial area, which Route 46 is maybe one of the first commercial highways in state of New Jersey, that that is an expected landscape. So I, professionally, this highway is made for commercial purposes, and this is where you should encounter signs of this density.
Is there a point where a small area can be saturated or oversaturated with signage to the point where it does become a potential distraction?
Well, if you're a habitual driver on 46, you screen out over time what you need to see, right? If you're looking for one of the businesses like Lazes or, that's in the shopping plaza, then you're looking for that specifically. So that goes with the driver distraction studies that I've read about placing a billboard that it doesn't add to that, because the billboard is not a directional sign. It's, there's, it's on two different information channels that you'd be processing. One is that I need to get to this site, of course, I need to get to Harbor Freight. And the other one is this is just a general background billboard. And I believe everyone has expectation that a billboard, by and large, we call this off-site for a reason, because with the way the law is written is that you're allowed to have an onsite billboard, you know, depending on the town you're in and what the, the zone is. But specific to the off-site, because it's not associated with any business in the plaza, then it's not an unexpected things, an unexpected feature to see as you drive.
It's funny, I'm sorry, it's funny you say that, because I noticed my colleagues are concerned about the density of the signs, and I was thinking, if you're ever going to put a sign like this, this is where it goes, right? There's no residential, and I guess I, I drive that road every day, and I'm like numb from it. So I didn't even think that it was a lot of signs.
And I think you're right.
Yeah.
But the two do not have to be mutually exclusive.
Yep, yep.
This is a much better spot.
Yes.
Than other areas.
Right, because you also don't have cars going 80 miles an hour, 90 miles an hour on 287. All of a sudden, there's this big sign, you're.
You ain't doing 80 miles an hour there.
Right. So to me, it is actually the right place for it.
Yeah, I, I am just looking at this, and it's, it's just a very unfortunate angle on this picture.
The angle works.
It's hideous. I mean, it's already an aesthetically poor area, no fault of your own, well before that image was, was conceived. I'm just wondering if that is adding or detracting from the way that area looks.
Well, as far as the board member to my left, that, you know, it's, to me, it's, it's an expectation where you would have a billboard on a commercial corridor. And like when you go up the turnpike, they are intermittent up the turnpike, and they're kind of unexpected at times, but in this area, I think it's appropriate. And when I was looking at Safety Voyager in this particular location, the density of accidents were not more than the state average for number of accidents in this area. So it's not like it's preloaded with accidents. It seems to be adequately working. It's, it's a jug handle a little bit to the east, brings you back around into the other shopping plazas. There's a direct right into, or a channelized right into the Holiday Inn area. So it seems like all the features that I want, safety-wise, for a, a traffic, for a divided highway, they're already here. I mean, I have an egress driveway only, I have a jug handle, I have a nearside right turn lane channelized. So everything like is already programmed for safety in this particular location.
And you, you've analyzed the data.
Yes.
It's coming in as a normal stretch of.
Yes.
The density of the signs is not causing.
Right.
An unusual number of accidents or greater number of.
Yeah, what I find is that state highways that have a lot going on in terms of egress, jug handles, drivers tend to be on their best behavior because they have a lot to process. And so this was indicative of that type of driver experience.
I have a question. Will this sign be visible at all from Route 80?
Maybe, but I think that would be a stretch, you know, it's not intended for Route 80.
But 287 behind it.
Maybe 287, yeah, I think that would be.
Not 287, it's all.
280.
280.
Well, 280.
280.
You know, it's, it's interesting, because the first sign application we ever had about 30 years ago was for behind the Holiday Inn. Maybe John McDonough remembers that one, do you, John?
Yep.
Okay. And we turned it down, and I couldn't understand why. It was all a white line.
Yeah, but they had the right to build.
I don't think so.
Oh, well, anyway, we turned it down. They got the approval from what last billboard was, okay.
No, they were the transition area, and it's already been. No, they were the transition area, and it's already been compromised.
Oh, okay.
I have no further questions for this question.
Just one more from a traffic side, just for me, I mostly, I go on every lot, go to that, but you're not showing us further eastbound there, so there's a light just past the current Harbor Freight sign that does a loop.
The traffic signal with the jug handle, yes.
There's also a left-hand lane to get on 80 and a right-hand lane to stay on 46. There's a lot of decisions I think drivers are making in that area, okay? And this flashing sign every eight seconds won't distract them at all from making their decisions as they're going eastbound.
That is specifically, right, specifically to answer that question, that's why it is eight seconds. It's an eight and hold. Eight seconds, if you're driving, is a pretty long time.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the... I don't know, I just... Sorry? Yeah, it's okay. You get older, you think slower. Speak for yourself. I am speaking for myself. Speaking to himself. Now you forgot your question. The distance between the two signs, you said was 100 feet?
Yes.
Is there any, I guess, I don't know, calculation or study or standard as far as the distance should be between such prominent signs?
Well, I would say that when I do DOT permits for commercial properties, like in the Route 46 quarter, I've yet to see a review comment from the NJ DOT, which is their primary concern is safety, they don't really care about what I'm putting into the plaza. But I've yet to see a comment that sign for shopping, the pile of sign for shopping Plaza A, and then you go another 100 feet for Shopping Plaza B, maybe you want to consider toning down both sides. I've never had that in terms from a safety perspective.
It's good to know. The issue you really have here is most of the signs is actually, is not conforming to township regulations.
That's true. Especially under the side of the road.
It's been there for, long before there really were regulations, they just redid them and redid them and redid them. And that's really, I think, we...
A lot of them are grandfather, highway signs.
The lots don't conform, the use is more or less new, but that's about it. Let me ask you a question. Did you have any input in terms of where it was positioned on this site?
No, I mean, they did their homework for me, because they did it...
You did?
No, I didn't have the opportunity, but nor would I need to because I'm at the right-hand out. That's exactly where I would want it to be. If I was looking at...
You don't get involved with the zoning process, you only get involved with DOT permitting and with the billboard section and...
Right, no, that's John's, Ballywick, not mine, thank God.
Any questions by members of the public? I hear none seen, I'm sorry.
Maybe if the sign were moved back to conform to the setback requirement, which is 80 feet, what would happen in terms of your analysis?
I think that the sign would be kind of worthless because it would be set back, and I would lose the cone of vision that I was talking about through the building.
You would?
Yes, to a certain degree, yes.
At 500 feet back, at a 20-degree, how high, how high is...
I hadn't done that, I don't have the benefit of that calculation, but it seems...
You don't know how high the building is, do you?
This building, to me, with the parapet, there's one shows...
You don't know?
I don't, I don't know, I didn't measure that.
Yeah.
Approximately 20 feet. Mr. Onal, it's probably not part of the top of the case, but the other thing, all we see on this sign right now is the word Harbor Freight, big and bold. Are we going to have some testimony as to what kind of clients are going to be messaging there, what kind of messages are going to be up there? Is that...
McDonald's.
No, it's not for you to answer.
Yeah, I mean, based on my experience, it has to be...
But it's not for you to answer, is it? Not a traffic issue, really?
Not really, I mean, but it has to be something that is not...
I did call this a witness for the particulars of the sign.
Right, and I'm going to ask King a question, I have a question.
King can answer off the bell.
Right, so what you would expect, what we see for advertising, you know, it's your common experiences.
We'll carry that question. We'll move on.
Joe, is there someone here that is going inside to us who have a public purpose space? We won't sell cigarettes, no pornographic...
Mr. Vicas, test.
Good, okay. Thank you, that's my question. That's it? Next witness.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Make sure you qualify this guy. You've never testified before.
Never.
Okay, you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but...
Yes, I did.
Say your name and spell your last name, please.
Sure. Hi, everyone, Happy New Year, John McDonough, MC, capital D-O-N, O-U-G-H, and I'm a project planner.
Yes, but even though you've been here many times, because there are members of the board, would you please just give a little...
Sure thing. Welcome to our new members. My name is John McDonough, my office is right up the road on 101 Gibraltar Drive off of Route 10. I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey, that license is current, it's in good standing. I testify before boards just like this throughout the state of New Jersey on a nightly basis, so I get to see the full cross-section, but I've been here many times as well, and that license is current, it's in good standing. I also have the National AICP, that's current and in good standing, and again, I've testified before hundreds of boards throughout the state.
And you're on reserve parking spot in this lot.
For better or worse, it's what I do all the time.
He's got his own coffee cup, you hear?
And he's acceptable.
Mr. McDonough, you've had an opportunity to examine the application before the board this evening?
Yes, I have.
You're fully familiar with the local ordinances and master plan?
Yes, I am.
Can you please summarize for the board how this application is impacting this document? Here's your conclusions regarding their ability to...
Sure, we're here in the B1 Zone District, which is one of your permissive zones. There's a long list of commerce-oriented uses that could go here. I won't read them all off, in fact, we put together a report that I think was submitted with the application packet, and it lists those uses in there, but just some of the things that could go in here, and again, as you've heard, is a non-residential area, but we're looking at retail, restaurants, brew pubs, theaters, auto repair shops, auto dealerships, training facilities, packing and fabrication facilities, contractor businesses, lumberyards, storage yards, storage warehouses are permitted uses in the Zone District. So there's a wide abundance of uses that could go here. Signs are allowed, we call them on-premises signs, signs that will advertise for the business that's there. If this was advertising for Harbor Freight, this would be a permitted use in the zone, but this is going to advertise for what we call off-premises businesses, and that's why it's before the board, because that's not permitted in your B1 Zone District.
So to that, when we talk about off-premises advertising, we're talking about national advertising campaigns?
That's correct, yeah.
We're talking about local advertising campaigns, local realtors, local attorneys, whatever.
There's no exclusion as to who can advertise on a billboard, it is a message board, that's the public purpose that it serves, it's a form of communication, in fact, some documents will call it the oldest form of mass media that's out there. The way that businesses can get the word out, the way that non-businesses can get the word out as well, such as churches, schools, health facilities and the like, will advertise or put messages on these boards, so...
Part of the message is also that this board's going to be displaying our public service messages, this advocate is committed to work with the township and local groups, no matter who they may be, to provide free advertising in their businesses, and they also will post free emergency messages.
Yes, and that, those are two key points, we call them PSAs, public service announcements, really at the discretion of the community, announce public service events, your local police organization having a function, some sort of civic event certainly can go up there on the board as well. And then emergencies can be preemptive. Last night, we had weather alerts all over the place, that could be preemptive, an amber alert, a fugitive alert, all of those things can be posted on a billboard and become an instrument of emergency services, and that's the benefit of real-time messaging, which is what these digital displays will do, as opposed to those older static displays that were one-time paint, then they were glue messages, and then they became vinyl, and this is just the latest form of displaying messages on a board.
When the township has to, or would like to broadcast something, let's say it's an emergency, right? Police want to broadcast a message on there, what's that process? Do they, there's a number they call, I assume, and do they speak to a person? And what's the turnaround time on getting that emergency message up on that sign?
I don't know that answer. We can probably get that for you before we're done, I haven't been asked that before, but I do know that it is preemptive, there's probably some sort of agreement with your police department where they have access to it, and there's a fugitive alert, it's probably instantaneous.
I've got a little experience with it, it's getting formalized, before it was like the Wild West, everybody had an idea, you'd have a call, you'd have a number, maybe there's a person there, maybe there isn't a person there, and they basically get it into the police department because that's 24 hours, because otherwise it would clerk's office, well, what happens if...
Yeah, that's my point, yeah.
It's a process the town has to work out because we have four now...
Maybe EMS services.
Well, as part of what we'll say here is...
But you're going to agree to do that.
We're going to agree to coordinate with the police department, the OEM office here in town, to set up a system that allows those entities to get messages right on the billboard 24 hours a day. If something comes up, like we had that storm overnight a couple nights ago, they'll be able to get in touch if the roads are out of action, or whatever message they need to get out, we'll make sure that happens.
It's the emergency messages that needs great coordination. You know, public benefit ones are, you know, you get them up there.
Yeah, they'll coordinate.
They'll get that bit. So you're agreeable to have a uniform or standardized process for the township?
Yes. Part of a condition, I guess.
And just to go back to the earlier question that the board asked about how the, I'll call it, the roll works, there are eight-second displays, instantaneous change to the next one. Generally, they're on rolls of cycles where you would get eight messages in a row, and then you'd go back to the first one. So Board Member A would have the first eight seconds, then Board Member B, all the way up to number eight, and then goes back, and that happens all day long, that roll or that cycle. It's different for each operator, but eight is usually the number of sequential that I see. Okay? So again, I think the positives of this land use are pretty clear-cut, I know the board's heard a number of these applications, but site suitability, this site is well-suited for an outdoor advertising sign, based on that engineering testimony that you heard, that the site can accommodate this sign without any interference of the circulation or the parking that is presently there. It's a spacious site, we're looking at four, greater than four acres on Route 46, 358 feet of frontage, that's generous frontage along that highway. It's a developed retail center, it's an area that really opens up along Route 46 with commercial uses, with the big shopping center across the street, the hotels, and then, of course, the string of commercial. We are remote from residential. If we look to the west, you've got, and I put that in the report here, the townhouses over at Hunter Ridge are almost 1,500 feet away, and then the nearest townhouse to the east over at Four Seasons is almost 1,000 feet away. So we've got good horizontal separation from residential uses here, it's a nice commercial pocket. I don't know, Joe, if we want to show these, these are actually...
Yeah, why don't you hand those out?
As we're looking at the negative criteria, I think it's important for the board to see these, I call them reverse view photographs, we went out there today, floated a drone up in the air from the location of where the board would be to its highest point, that 54-foot height, and basically spun it around. So you're going to see the reverse of looking at the sign, but basically what the sign is looking out at. And I think you'll see there's not that clutter that gets a little warped when you look at it from the vantage point of the ground.
It's not going to be...
And as they're being handed out, A5 is just going to be a series of five photographs, again, taken with that drone up at 54 feet, and we've just basically spun it around clockwise, holding it stationary.
Doesn't look as cluttered from up above.
You could see, elevating the sign helps loosen it up, for sure. And this would be from the peak of the sign, this is at the top of that 14-foot panel.
May I ask what time this was taken?
So he was out there, I can get you the exact time, but I know he was out there around 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock today.
So those townhouses up going westbound, they're now going to see this thing?
Well, those townhouses are, the nearest townhouse is 1,450 feet away.
Okay, are they going to see it?
There will be visibility, I'll call it filtered visibility, given the plantings that are there, from this vantage point, the windows are minuscule, the building, the sign itself will start to saturate with everything else that's around it from this vantage point.
Isn't there a big berm by Ridge? They're separated.
There's a lot of vegetation.
Lot of vegetation, because I don't even remember, but I can see, I can see the townhomes. So I don't know how much vegetation there is, I know there is, most of it's the buffer along the highway, you know?
You've got buildings and everything in between.
And you have headlights coming at you, if you're seeing the sign, you're seeing the headlights.
Yeah. Picture one, so the big tower, power line tower across the street there, that's actually higher than this sign, is that correct?
Much higher, and to give you all a little vantage as to height, a couple of years ago, I think it was when we were doing the Whole Foods, they were looking for a 50-foot high sign, and I drove around, I think we found a couple of 50-footers on your older shopping centers, including the Arlington Plaza right across the street there. So you can see the Arlington Plaza sign, which I think is a 50-footer, so we're about the same height, I think we're slightly higher than that with our peak. So that gives you a little perspective there, you've got a 50-footer right across the street here as well.
What's landing in this? Who's that? The one by Home Depot sign. And it looks like they have signs on the old Kmart building already.
Yeah, washes and...
Yeah.
So that's the first page, looking to the west, and then, of course, frame number two, we're now spinning to the north, you get a sense of the shopping center, and all you see are non-residential uses. And the point here is it's arranged in a V configuration, so you're really looking at the nose of the sign from this vantage point, not really the...
It won't be illuminated that way.
Correct. And then the third frame, we're now spinning around to looking to the east, again, the target audience here is the westbound traffic, and you can see that there are some townhomes, they're almost 1,000 feet away, I say the nearest one is 975 feet away, similar buffering, similar berming, really to protect those homes from the highway, the highway's there, this land use is basically following the highway and trying to optimize and maximize its distance from those homes.
Billboard is on both sides, right?
There's what I'm, yes. Frame number four, we're now looking to the south, back towards Route 280, 80 back there, and this is the back of the sign, so no illumination from this end. And then the last photo, we just kind of gave you a top-down, and we put a little star, a little asterisk where the sign was going to go, and that bullnose island just to show and emphasize what Bill had shown you, that this is not going to result in loss of parking, loss of circulation. Basically, the two uses can coexist without either one interfering with the other. And importantly, the applicant doesn't only need relief for a use that's not permitted in the zone, but also for two uses, where only one use is allowed. Your ordinance calls a billboard a principal use, it's not an accessory use, so you actually will have two principal uses here. The test that we always look at with two principal uses is just to make sure that those two uses don't interfere with each other, and I think the positioning here proves that that's the case. The sign is located based on respect to the wetlands, to the wetlands transition area, and also with respect to the established site as it exists now. and also with respect to the established site as it exists now. There is D6 height relief to elevate this sign to 54 feet, where 35 feet would be the maximum that's allowed in the zone. We think that the basis for that is founded by the evidence that we've given you, that lifting that sign a little higher lessens that clutter and again promotes clearer visibility of the sign, safer visibility and readability of the sign, without creating a substantial impact here, given the heights of those other structures in the area. All said, based on the testimony before me, I think the positives here would substantially outweigh the negatives in terms of the D1 use relief, the D1 dual-use relief, the D6 height relief. And then there also is that C relief for setback, where the sign at its closest point is going to be 30 feet from the road. 80 feet is the minimum that's required for a building. This is not a building per se. It's basically a sign on a stick, if you will, or on a pole. So it doesn't have that same mass as a building. And in that regard, we think the height here and the setback will not violate any of the planning goals for adequate light, air, and open space. To that extent, I think the applicant has met its burden based on the evidence before you. I'll rest upon what we put on the report as well and happy to elaborate on anything.
Any questions, Mr. McDonough?
No.
I'm a little confused, but these are just C variances that we have to get?
No, no, no. There's a D1.
All right, because it's not on here.
Yeah, it says only C on our sheet, but it's also a D.
That's why we're here.
Right, but on our sheet, it just says granting a C variance.
That was my error.
You're actually moving on three Ds here. The one is for a sign type that's not permitted in the zone. The second D is another D1 to have two uses on one site. And then the D6 to have a height that exceeds the maximum allowed by more than 10 feet or more than 10%. And 35 is allowed for buildings and we're at 54 feet.
So are these signs allowed in any zone in our town?
Yes. You do have signs that are allowed in the.
Off the zone and that's the other.
Has to be a principal use though, right? Don't you have to have a property that would have nothing else on it? No?
That I, that I don't know. I don't know if that's, just double check that.
Joe, you don't shake his head yes?
I believe that is an issue and also the way the sizing of the lots.
Sizing lots, yeah. It's got to be so many acres or something.
Coincidentally, the only lots available of that size, those positions are. At Alhaw, the Way Street, something next to the Way Street.
Yeah, those are your POD, LIW5, and your O2 zones. And I agree, when you apply the 12 or so criteria, that knocks out pretty much every site except for the government sites.
Do you know when those, do you know when that was done?
2014.
Recent, pretty recent. It was a result of these of the lawsuit over the holiday inside.
It's 10.
Right, Joe?
It's 10 years. It's part of the settlement of the lawsuit with the town. How to adopt that ordinance? And also pay damages.
So there had to be some discussion or understanding that they were avoiding those signs to be allowed on property along highways.
I don't know the story after the adoption of the ordinance.
Because they did, because otherwise they would have.
Well, it was a, it was in and out too. They adopted an ordinance that repealed the ordinance, right? Then adopted this.
Did they do it two steps?
I, I was involved with that litigation. John, the sign is now going to be, the edge of the sign will be 30 feet and some inches off of the 46 right of one, correct?
Yes.
I was just looking at the surveys here and there's, I haven't been out to this site in a long time, over a year. I do not remember that island that we're going to put this in. But it's there?
The edge of the parking lot.
It's where the parking lot ends?
Yes.
I asked a question to the traffic engineer whether or not he could push his sign a little further back from 46. And he wasn't sure of the height of the building. The freight building, the Harbor Freight building.
We also have to, to answer that question more fully, I'd like to consult with my engineer specifically on the parameters of the D.
He's got relief on a, on a fiber improved transition area, correct?
I do. I have a transition area waiver for redevelopment. And that's, that piggybacks on the initial permit that the Harbor Freight had gotten or the property had gotten for the addition.
Way back.
It wasn't that far back.
That's a pretty standard permit where it's already a parking lot.
That's correct.
So to move it a little bit further back, I doubt we're going to jeopardize your permit.
I, that would impact my parking. I don't have.
Just switch. Into where the pole is going to go now would become a parking space and the.
No, I, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. But I wouldn't have enough room to swap a parking space on the end. I would impact the egress driveway out. This.
I'm going away from the road.
No, I understand that. If I push back this way, I would.
Not way back. I'm just talking about maybe 20 feet.
So I would be in a parking space and then I could not make this island into a parking space. I'm too close. If you look on your site plan.
I get it. Okay.
I highlighted a red line.
And that site can't lose any parking places?
No, I don't believe so. But I'll prove that out. I'll prove that out for you.
I mean, it's been a lot of the side to back. The prime spaces are kind of limited for this size building.
But all you're not going to see is the pole.
Yeah.
You're still going to see the sign or maybe you won't see the sign as well.
Kind of addresses somewhat what Dave was talking about. It's just the standard old state highway clutter. A lot of signs that were there, they've been there for 40, 50 years. How much do you add to that? If setting it back changes the viewscope? I'm not so sure it does. But John, you, where did you come in?
Yeah.
What was your justification?
The building itself, I believe, is also not conforming as to setback 60 some odd feet or so. And if you look at that frame number one, you can see that the building immediately to the west of that is even closer.
Right.
So there are, I'll say, intrusions into the front yard in terms of greater mass, the buildings themselves. And also, if it helps the board, just by comparison with the other zones where the sign would be allowed, the minimum setback requirement is 20 feet. The maximum is 60 feet. So this proposal here is at 30 feet, which would conform with that minimum if it was in the zone where it's allowed.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. McDonough?
Nope.
Any members of the public have any questions of Mr. McDonough? I hear none to see none.
I have no further.
No further witnesses? Do you want to sum or do you want to? Let me see. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in support of this application? Please come forward.
I'll be very quick. My name is Frank Cahill.
Swear that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and the humble truth?
Yes.
Give your address.
Frank Cahill, 90 East Halsey Road, Precipiny. I am executive board member of the Precipiny Area Chamber of Commerce and also the chairman of Precipiny Economic Development. And I have been working with the one sign on 287 to give PSAs to the township of Precipiny and they've been very cooperative. So I'm looking forward to work with this sign vendor to receive PSAs for the town.
Could you explain to us how that works? Because there was a question about.
Well, with the police and fire, it's a little bit different because that's immediate exposure. What I have to give can go up today, tomorrow, next week. I have the dimensions of the sign. I create artwork and I submit artwork to the company and they put it up. It's very simple.
Okay.
Thank you.
I must, I probably should have asked Mr. McDonough this question on messaging. So I think you made a comment, sir, that there's no restriction on what can be said on this sign. Did I hear that correct?
No, as to who, in terms of a particular business or whatnot. But I agree, the board can certainly impose reasonable restrictions. The word I usually see is inappropriate content. It's very broad-based and can certainly drill down obscenity, words of hate.
Is that our result? Isn't that the vendor's job to do that?
Of one of the other applications, we have a manual of the lighting process, the message process, and what they will not do. And it was quite comprehensive. So maybe your client can look at that and.
We will, we, if it's fit to approve this application, we will submit to your professionals an outline and a guideline as to what type of messages will be provided. We tell you right now, no inappropriate content can be allowed on this building.
Little worse?
From a business standpoint, Joe, the company's obviously in business to sell advertising and messaging through advertising. So the PSA part, I don't know who to ask this question of, but is there something in that agreement we have and the other things, guidelines, that says that that will be so much time allocated to it? Or is it, how does that work?
It's on demand.
It's on demand. So if, but if I have multiple things on demand, okay? And I have 25 advertisers paying me money, how do I determine who goes first? Is the public service stuff trumped?
It's not decided who goes first because you're cycling messages to changing audiences. But all of those PSAs will be accommodated.
All.
And the, sure, any, anything in the municipality, any, is it not the Chamber of Commerce?
No, I know it's not that crowded now, but.
Chamber of Commerce, any local organizations.
Any local organization? Is that delineated in our agreement?
Local community organizations. The usual suspects, Kuwatus Rotary Alliance, the F W Bowl, those types of entities. No, local, any local. If there's a local chapter of the Daughters of the Confederacy, I think you're probably going to have. Outside of that, I don't see.
But any 501(c)(3) or 503(c)(3) would be well said, right?
Subject to the appropriateness of the message. My client's not going to put out messages to antagonize groups, any hateful speech.
Is a dispensary, marijuana dispensary inappropriate?
I don't think so. It's legal.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because he said inappropriate. I think.
My personal think it's inappropriate, but it's.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
By the way, you can't advertise cannabis on a billboard. I don't know if you can in a magazine either.
You can?
You cannot.
No.
So.
Yeah, there are guidelines. The state is.
Just like cigarettes.
Cigarettes, liquor, I'm not sure.
Liquor, you don't have a problem.
I don't know about liquor. I don't know about liquor.
I suggest you get a copy of this manual that was filed with one of your competitors.
And you'll comply with that. We're going to let Mr. O'Neill sum now or?
Done.
Or you've just done it?
I will take the board for his attention here this evening. I think it's been a pretty comprehensive application. I think he has shown that Route 46 especially is appropriate for these types of signs. It's a commercial nature of the district. I think it needs to be more commercial than it is. It needs to be finalized for 46 parts of the campus. Things like this actually don't. So I would hope that the board would.
Thank you. Motion to go into conference?
So moved. Side.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Can you close? Okay. We'll have a starter?
Sure. I think it was summed up well. I think if there's ever a place to put a sign up, that is the place. You're not near any residential. It's already lit. It's already, you know, cars are not zooming by speeding. The people know where they're going. If not, they're paying attention to where they need to go. The eight seconds was explained well. The fact that you go from high to low as you get closer makes sense to me. You're going to adhere to the request of the board to, for the guidelines of what you're putting up there. So I will be voting yes.
I believe is appropriate place for the billboard location since it is mutual benefit for the town residents as well as the business people. And I'm in favor of this.
I'll echo the comments. One comment I would like to ask of the chairman or whoever. We have these sign requests. I think we've agreed, we've already approved three kinds of signs of this nature. And how many more do we have coming? It's not, it's not part of the decision tonight, but it will be part of the decision moving forward, I'm sure. But the town has an obligation to allow a certain number. Is that correct? Is that, is that, what is?
Certain distance between them.
It's the distance. I know the distance between. It's got to be at least a mile.
No. It's 3,000 feet between digitals, 1,000 feet between statics.
Do they still both static?
And they have to be in a non-residential zone. So wherever. Wherever residential zoning is along the state of federal highways, which is the western part of the town.
Isn't there restrictions at inner, of.
Oh, off the ramps.
Ramps and. So.
500 feet off the Bull Nose.
And 3,000 feet may not be, if you go in 3,000 feet west, there may not be an appropriate spot for a sign. Maybe there's.
It's not.
So the answer is as many as they could fit. That's probably the answer.
By virtue of approving this one, we are blocking future signs 1,000 feet each direction.
15 every feet.
15 on, well.
No, this is.
3,000 feet each direction.
Okay.
Now, they could put a static in between.
I can't believe they still pick static.
They do.
Come out with the wallpaper and the ladders. Come on.
Mr. Williams, your answer was?
I'll be voting for it.
Mr. Berkowitz?
I'm probably going to vote for it, but I have a question. To the whole nature of these signs. After hearing where they're allowed in town. Should we be hearing this or should we be saying to the applicants, need to go to council and ask them to change the zoning law? I mean, because it comes to a point where.
I think changing the.
It comes to a point where, wouldn't it be such a complex rule, you know, a set of rules?
The fact of the matter is you've got a lot of state highway and highway commercial business locations and that's where these things go.
Yeah, but the town is in zoning according to that.
Yeah, but if the zoning doesn't have a footprint in reality.
That's why we're here.
It's not going to be, it's not going to be a good ordinance.
I mean, I mean, I understand.
You have to understand, George Chabot wrote that ordinance 40 years ago.
Oh my God.
And it's been buttoned up, adjusted, and that's about it? Something wrong with it.
They did something in 14.
I know.
Which turns out, turns out to be nothing.
No, I didn't say that.
No, I did.
No, they added some uses. They got much more practice. But the fact, the fact is.
It was just testified to that the only place in the zone for these signs now is town property.
Well, I'm not sure that's, he gave an estimate.
I'll bet he's right.
I think, I think.
I'm just looking at the, I'm trying to look at the whole picture. And the whole picture screams to me, change the zoning ordinance.
I think, I think you're correct.
Why don't you go to him? That'd be handy. I'll be right behind you, Bernard.
Well.
Way behind.
I know it probably goes to the ears, but I mean, we should be making recommendations.
It's a good idea.
Playing board sometimes makes recommendations for zoning change.
You're going to do the reports to the council this year?
What reports?
The report we're supposed to do every year?
That we haven't done for how many years?
A couple of years. We have nothing to report. They.
I'm voting yes.
Good.
Mr. Cappel? Yeah, I'm voting yes. I think this is, it's not perfect by any means, but it's one of the better spots that's come before this board for sure. If I'm putting it in a better spot, it secures 3,000 feet each direction from another board coming before this board, then I think that it's the right thing to do. So I'll be voting yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Petty, I forgot your name already. Mr. Petty, you want to make a comment or whether you would be voting in favor?
No, thank you for asking. Yeah, Mr. Petty is right. So, yeah, no, I think all the experienced leaders spoke better, so I'm nothing to say. And I've learned on this process today, it's my first day. I'm not really sure I should be asking this, but this is, I'll be so happy if I'm sitting over there, all these leaders approved or almost said nothing. So if you can comment on that board, try to be in Precipiny for monthly once. That'd be so nice of you guys.
Thank you. Skriniarli?
Oh, well, um, I think it'll be a distraction. I think the Zoom shots or the shots that Mr. McDonough has shown us, I think it will be seen from the homes. I don't want, Route 46 is congested with so many different signage, and I think this would just be a distraction to the, to the drivers. I'm going to be voting no on this.
Thank you. My personal opinion is I don't like these signs. But my realistic opinion or my realistic comment is they're there. There's going to be a limit on how many we'll be able to put in town. This looks, and I was here 30-some years ago when we turned down the Holiday Inn sign, which would have been a much better sign. First of all, they didn't have electronics in those days, and secondly, it was hidden from everything. You couldn't see it except if you were on Route 80. So I will be voting in favor of it. Again, personal opinion, they bother me as I drive down the road.
It's not going to make this area look any better. I'm sorry.
It's not going to make the area look, but it's, but it's the...
But if it's where it has to go.
It's an okay spot.
Okay. Not great.
It's an okay spot, and it prevents anything from 6,000 feet, right?
Three each direction.
3,000 each direction.
It's interesting, we didn't take into account these townhomes. When on a pre, different application, we took it into account, townhomes across the highway that were just about equidistant to the ones to the east here.
But there's so many, there's so much light on this road with headlights and everything else.
I agree, and that actually weighed into my decision.
Motion to come out of conference?
Move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you reclose? Do we want to vote to authorize the attorney to draw up a resolution?
Sure.
Would that be better, Mr.? So we make sure we get all these...
Which is hard to put me to work already, huh?
Who's going to make that motion?
I move, I move for the attorney to draw up a...
Second, Mr. Ready.
Second.
Roll call.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Brignani?
No.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willand?
Yes. Yes.
Good luck.
Want to adjourn? No, just, I want to say, um, I'm very thankful of this, my silver anniversary as chairman, 2050 year.
Really? Oh, my God, we should have had a cake.
I know, we should have had a cake. At least, at least you would have got me something in Sterling Silver, you know?
It's not too late. Let's have a party.
It will be my last year. Just in case you don't know, I'm in the process of relocating to Ocean County, and I'm going to miss this. I'm really, really going to miss this.
Don't move.
Don't move.
He's not missing it that much.
In my age, and you live in a, in a house with stairs all over the place. A friend of mine's on the, and actually, I had lunch with Joe today, and I was telling him that there was a time when I was actually thinking that maybe I would apply down there next year. Yeah, I'm not going to. I'm walking away very happy with 35 years on this board and a lot of memories, a lot of really, really good...
We'll have an appropriate one.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you. All right. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Chaz's last night, he's retiring.
Oh, oh, yes. Chaz, great, great.
Well done, Chaz.
Really, really, really good. And I'd like to, I'm really elected with welcome, Bill. Bill's dad, if you didn't know, George Johnson was our attorney for about a dozen years. We had a very good relationship with him, and Bill substituted it a few times, maybe more than a few times in those years. And that's why I, you know, we felt he was a good fit for the board, and he knows most of the people on board now.
I appreciate the vote of confidence.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?